All right, I know it is evening, so I want to be cognizant of everyone's time. So good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Cree Matlock. I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Policy for the Power Coalition for Equity and Justice. And I want to start by grounding us and why we are here and what's at stake. So many of you all know Power Coalition for years have been on the front lines of the fight for fair representation and redistricting in Louisiana and making sure that every voter, especially black voters, have an equal voice in who represents them. And from the 2020 redistricting cycle to ongoing litigation in 2022 and beyond, we've worked alongside partners, communities, legal advocates to ensure that our maps reflect diversity and strength of Louisiana and not racial gerrymandering. And today, again, tomorrow, the legislative session, the special legislative session, that work continues. And as many of you also are aware, the U.S. Supreme Court recently heard the arguments of Louisiana versus Calais, basically which is a case where it questions whether protecting black voters under the Voting Rights Act violates the Constitution. And we are now here with a special session upon us beginning tomorrow. And we will go into that later today, but I just want to stress of why this moment matters. Right? So basically, decisions made by, made right now will shape not only our democracy, but our, the politics that affects our everyday life. And we want to make sure that you all understand how crucial your presence and presence of supporting black voters having a voice is important to make sure that we have proper representation. And this moment is crucial right now. Like, this is a demonstration that must happen on Monday, October 27th. So we hope that everyone that is on this call will be able to be present on Monday. And we will talk through what is at stake during the special session and how you can actually be engaged. I also want to let you know, you please utilize the chat if you all have any questions throughout the presentation. We will work to answer any questions you may have. And two, we'll provide resources of talking points, tips of how to do testimony, all of those things, resources that may be needed ahead of Monday as well. So let's go get into our presentation. Tori will lead our conversation of what is at stake.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Cree. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining. My name is Tori Wenger. I'm an attorney at the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund. I have had the distinct honor of representing Power Coalition, the State Conference of the NAACP, and nine individual black voters in what has now become a multi-year saga in a fight for fair maps. And it all started with the robust community engagement during the census process, during the redistricting roadshows, during each and every one of the legislative sessions where we have had to show up and fight for fair maps. So today, I'm gonna reprise a little bit of what Cree said better than I ever could have about the importance of this moment, about how the heck we got here and how you all can continue to be engaged and unrelenting in our fight for fair maps and fair representation. So we know we're here because fair maps equal fair representation. Redistricting determines political power, whose voices are heard loudest and whose may be drowned out by unfair maps. We know that the districts and as they're drawn and who is able to be elected on them fundamentally shapes whether or not leaders are going to be responsive to community needs, whether or not they're gonna act, enact policies that reflect what community members want, what they expect for their federal dollars or their state and local dollars and policies. All of that comes down to how districts are developed and whether or not they aim to suppress the votes of some or amplify the votes and voices of the few. So we know for years, for years and years and years now, more than half a decade, indeed, Louisianians have organized, legislated, and litigated for the promise of a fair and representative congressional map and indeed, all kinds of different maps. But we're really gonna talk about the congressional map and cycle and the way that we've gotten here and what we can do moving forward tonight. So if my count is correct, this special session starting tomorrow will be the fifth time that the legislature has convened in an extraordinary session. So certainly, they've had regular sessions where maps and other parts of the redistricting process have been flagged, but in a special session, this is round five. First, in 2022, they passed an unfair map, HB1. That was after the roadshow process. That was after so many of you showed up and showed out at the state Capitol calling for a fair map and showing the many ways in which it could be drawn. They passed that in the early months of 2022. And then after the governor vetoed it, they came back into session and they overrode that veto in what was truly, you know, an unprecedented move in recent history, at least on this Constitution. Next, we, you know, we filed a lawsuit. We went to federal court and we had that district court determine that HB1, that only had one district where black voters were all packed in, it was the only district in which they could elect their candidate of choice versus two, which was very much an option on the table as we demonstrated through these legislative processes. You know, the court affirmed that. They said that HB1 is a violation of the Voting Rights Act and improperly dilutes the power of black voters who, under federal law, should have more representation. So the legislature went into session again with that court's determination hanging over it. And what did they do? They just reenacted HB1. They didn't do anything to pass a fair map and be done with the process or be compliant with federal law. Fast forward a bit, there's a lot of different things that happened in between, whether it was at the Supreme Court, other places. And finally, years later, they were essentially convinced at that final juncture in 2024 that, okay, now multiple federal courts, indeed, two panels of the Fifth Circuit have now said that that district court, who said HB1 is unlawful, was right. And so essentially, the Fifth Circuit is like, legislature, no, really, HB1's gotta go. You have this opportunity to pass a new map. And that's what they did in 2024. They enacted SB8, the current congressional map. So just as a bit of the landscape here to remind folks, I know many of you are familiar with this story now. In 2022, the legislature passed HB1, that first map you see on the left of your screen. And they got sued under the Voting Rights Act by LDF, ACLU, ACLU of Louisiana, and others on behalf of Power Coalition, the NAACP, and those nine individual black voters. Fast forward, we get a win in the district court. It's upheld twice by the Fifth Circuit. And so at long last, in 2024, the legislature says, okay, we'll pass a new map. But instead of passing one that had already been vetted through all of that litigation, they chose to pass this map in the middle, SB8. And lo and behold, shortly after, now they're getting sued by non-black voters saying that the legislature's effort to comply with the Voting Rights Act is in and of itself a violation of the 14th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. So they pass one map, they get sued under the Voting Rights Act. They pass a new map, they get sued under the Constitution. And all the while, they could have passed a fair map that we have been offering to them time and time and time again in all of these special sessions and the regular sessions in between and the roadshow that led up to all of this. They could have passed a map that complied with both the BRA and the Constitution. But time and time again, they have bypassed that opportunity. And we are predicting this session will be New Days, Same Script. Months ago, August 20th, is when it was on our radar that the legislature was planning to go into this special session right around when the Supreme Court was set to weigh that constitutional challenge from the group of non-black voters. It was only in recent weeks that leadership was starting to pull back that plan, presumably because it's a little bit messy when the Supreme Court hasn't been able to weigh in. And from the rumors we've heard, apparently, some folks thought that the Supreme Court was going to issue this monumentally consequential decision from the bench, which would be wildly unprecedented for something with these types of stakes in play and with so much nuance and complication to the issues at play in that case. So I'll get into that more as we discuss this further. But fast forward to just a couple days ago, we finally got the call of this session, which again, months ago, was predicted to be another round of map drawing and now has this kind of narrow call, which is to legislate relative to the election code. Well, that part's not narrow, I'll talk about that. Election dates, deadlines, plans, whatnot for the 2026 cycle and to provide funding for that. So essentially, this call is putting the entire election code on the table as something that could be legislated around. But it looks a little bit different from the call of this session that we saw for those other four cycles or ones where their specific mandate has been to draw new maps or a new congressional map specifically. So we're hearing some rumblings that legislative leadership is gonna try to say, oh, maps are not germane to this call, that that's not what we're here for. But we'll get back to why, at the end of the day, this is still about redistricting and we still need to mobilize and hold them accountable to that and to the principles of fairness, which should be fundamental to any process that's about electoral access or redistricting in our maps. So as I mentioned, this timeline all aligns with when the Supreme Court heard arguments in Louisiana v. Calais that challenged from non-black voters against the current map. Last week, LDF, our President Director Counsel specifically, Janine Nelson, argued on behalf of the black voters I mentioned and Power Coalition and NAACP in that case. And she was up against three oralists on the other side, including the attorneys for the non-black voters who filed the initial lawsuit, including an attorney from the Department of Justice and including your Solicitor General in Louisiana, where the state, instead of defending SB8, is now essentially reversing course and saying, actually, SB8 should go and the whole Voting Rights Act should come down with it. So ultimately, this case is monumental, not only for Louisianians, but for the future of our democracy and fair maps nationwide. The outcome of the case, whenever the Supreme Court issues it, will determine what the next steps are for y'all's congressional map, but also what the future of redistricting doctrine is going to look like in our nation and what that means for fair representation for all of us. At the core of the case, as I've alluded to, or as you've heard me mention before in other trainings along these lines, the core of the case is really the tension or the perceived tension by the opposing counsel between the constitutional protections and the Voting Rights Act's protections when it comes to redistricting. Specifically, the equal protection clause that's in the 14th Amendment says that lawmakers can't consider race predominantly when they're sorting voters in or out of a district. Essentially, you can't cast aside other traditional redistricting criteria, like how compact a district is, whether or not it's contiguous, that all of its parts are connected, or that the populations between districts are relatively equal. You can't cast those considerations aside for the purpose of considering race first and foremost. At the same time, while there's that prohibition under the Constitution, there's also a requirement under Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, which says that lawmakers have to be conscientious of race to the extent that it is to ensure that there's fair representation, especially in states where there is a persistent pattern of racially polarized voting, as there is in Louisiana. And there are consistent trends of both residential segregation along racial lines and discrimination and inequity of access to all kinds of resources and elements of public life, like fair education, employment, housing, et cetera. Basically, if there is racial discrimination, there ought to be accounting for race in the redistricting process to correct for that, that type of discrimination and how it dilutes the power of protected groups like minority voters and in Louisiana, black voters specifically. So we had to go all the way to Supreme Court just on this narrow question of whether or not SB8, the current map, considered race too much. We argued that in March, and then instead of issuing decision in June of this year, the court set it for reargument, this time asking whether or not that intentional creation of a second majority black district violated in and of itself the 14th and 15th Amendments. At this point, that is where the state, so your government officials who are defending y'all's rights in Louisiana, decided to flip course and no longer really defend SB8 or the legislature's choice to enact it in 2024, essentially as a compromised map that was balancing political preferences of the majority, like wanting to protect important incumbents, like the Speaker of the House, Majority Whip, et cetera, with, you know, the desire of legislative Black Caucus leaders and the community who had long been testifying that we finally need a fair map and even if it's not our first choice, we'll take SB8. So that new question created this course of events where essentially, the black voters that LDF and ACLU and others represent are the only remaining line of defense in the courts for not only the current congressional map, but also the protections and principles of the Voting Rights Act as they apply in the state of Louisiana and as they could apply nationwide. So what the opponents of this congressional map and now the state itself is doing is trying to contort a case that was really just narrowly about Senate Bill 8 and the current congressional map and trying to instead make it this bigger, badder outright attack on the Voting Rights Act writ large. So put simply, they're trying to pick critical civil rights protections against one another. They're trying to say that the Reconstruction Amendments, the ones passed after the Civil War to ensure the rights and protection of black people and formerly enslaved Americans were protected and honored, they're trying to say that those amendments somehow say that the Voting Rights Act can't contemplate race when trying to remedy racial discrimination in states where that discrimination persists today. So it's a lot of kind of analytical, legal, and moral gymnastics to get to a place where we're essentially saying black voters should not have an opportunity to fight for a map that remedies the harms that persist against them today and the ways in which their voice and their vote is being diluted in a state like Louisiana. So effectively, it is black voters who are holding the line in the courts for fair maps in Louisiana and the future of the Voting Rights Act nationwide. But that's where we come to this legislative session starting tomorrow. While we are working in the courts and awaiting a decision in Louisiana v. Calais, it is critical that we all hold the line for a fair map at the State House in Baton Rouge. We know a decision from the Supreme Court could come anytime from now through the end of June of next year. And what we understand this session to now be doing is rather than really jumping the gun and drawing a new map that goes ahead and strips away not only necessarily the one additional opportunity district for black voters, but perhaps both of them, making the map essentially one where black voters have no real opportunity to elect their candidates of choice in the more historic, recent District CD2, where for a few decades now, black voters have been able to elect candidates of choice. And also CD6, where only recently, they earned that choice. For a while, based off of media coverage, we were anticipating that that could all be on the line this session. Allegedly, and we will see in the days ahead, that's off the plate. But the attempt now has been to change the election dates and deadlines to essentially buy the legislature more time to do that later and effectively immediately, whenever they hear from the Supreme Court, if the court does choose to strike down SB8 and leave any latitude for the legislature to essentially gut black political power and representation. So essentially, what we see this effort to change election dates as doing is basically showing that the legislature is posturing itself to strip away fair representation for black voters. If the state's position on defending SB8 indicates the legislature plans to abandon that map now or later, there's really no reason to delay the elections or to wait on that if the end game is a fair map. The only real reason they need to buy themselves time is if they're hoping or banking or trying to contort whatever comes from the Supreme Court as a road ahead that would allow for that. But we know at the same time, for years, through this whole process, there have been so many options to pass a fair map that is not susceptible to the same type of challenge that was brought against SB8, that does not even necessarily require a majority of black districts, but would still be able to have black voters elect their candidates of choice in two congressional districts rather than just one and certainly rather than zero. We know those options are on the table. We know because the district court in the Robinson litigation and as affirmed twice by the Fifth Circuit, said that there was seven different maps on the table that both complied with the Voting Rights Act and did not violate the Constitution's prohibitions on the over-consideration of race. We also know that friends of the court, other parties and groups that have submitted amicus briefs, have demonstrated that there are other ways to draw these maps that consider race even less, if not, not at all, when you are sorting voters and still provide for more opportunity than the map the legislature passed in 2022 or any map that we would predict they may pursue in a rushed expedited session whenever that court decision comes down if they see it as a way to gut black political power. So that brings us to this coming week and the session that is gonna start tomorrow and could go anywhere through mid-November, but we assume will be much more expedited. Power Coalition is working around the clock and they got you on this call. And I hope that will precede you all joining us on Monday for a mobilization at the State House. If you are able to get to Baton Rouge as well, though, there is literally a Senate and Governmental Affairs Committee meeting on this bill to move election dates tomorrow at 3:00 PM at the State House. There will be other House and Governmental Affairs Committee meetings. There will be moments when you could, you know, take your own representatives aside or other folks that you can make the appeal to, to center fairness and a transparent process. All of this legislating, lobbying, et cetera, is about to, you know, start tomorrow and go for however long, whether it's just a week or multiple. We have to be ready, we have to be mobilized, and Monday is one of many opportunities for you to get involved and weigh in. So I know many of you are probably veterans of the process at the State House, but I do want to go through some of the fundamentals, both when it comes to how you can share your voice and then the types of messages that we want to lift up. So first of all, in committee meetings, and again, I'll kind of preview the committees most relevant here, you'll have the opportunity to signal your support or opposition to a bill through filing a green card or a red card. A green card says you like the bill, a red card says you don't like the bill. And on those cards, you can indicate whether or not you also want to speak orally. It's of course helpful to signal your support and you don't have to speak if you're not comfortable, but we hope to equip you with the kinds of messages and confidence to know that your voice really matters in this process and no one can share your voice or your story as well as you can. So Senate Governmental Affairs and House and Governmental Affairs are really the main venues where we're gonna hear the crux of arguments about some of these bills. There are some budget and, you know, financial related ones. We might see if things bounce around to other committees, but for the most part, it's Senate and Gov. and House and Gov. where we're gonna have the most substantive debates and the venue for public community testimony. Senator Klein Peter chairs Senate and Governmental Affairs and Representative Bowyer chairs House and Governmental Affairs. They also are the bill sponsors for the main legislative items that leadership is pushing around moving the election dates. Fundamentally, what the main bill, SB1 and HB1, are doing is buying an extra month before the primaries will occur next year and related dates and deadlines for the congressional races. And what that would do is give them more time for the Supreme Court to weigh in and for them potentially to push through a super fast, probably not very transparent, redistricting process that does not equip black voters and community across the state from substantively weighing in and making sure that the only outcome is a fair, just, and lawful map. So in terms of providing your own oral testimony, we know it can be a little daunting to get up there, sit at the table and, you know, be on the record and all that kind of stuff, but we promise that no one will bite and it'll make you feel very good about your contributions to this record and this important effort in the fight for fair maps. So a few of the logistics, when you go up to the table after you've submitted a red card, there'll be red or a green card, red card or green card, but mainly here for SB1, HB1, it's gonna be a red card. When you submit that, the chair will call your name and you'll come down to the table and be ready to provide your testimony. Sometimes, they will indicate that your comments should be kept to two minutes or three minutes, something like that, or sometimes those rules are not invoked. But first thing you're gonna do is address the chair and the members, saying hello, chair and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak. So start with, you know, gratitude with those formal acknowledgements. Then you're gonna want to indicate who you are. Say who you are, where you're from, your parish, your town or city. And if there's other affiliations, if you're representing a group like Power Coalition or a different affiliate in the group, in the state, you're gonna wanna identify that. You also have an opportunity to write that on your card. Keep in mind that, again, you may be rushed. They may say, oh, we need to keep our testimony tight. You can have it written and you can read off of something that you've already prepared. You could have a full, a few bullet points. You can go off the cuff, but please do stay on message and at least know kind of the core, maybe three points that you want to keep your testimony to. Use your own words and know that you are the expert of your own experience. You do not have to be a redistricting expert. You don't have to be a lawyer. You don't have to be a lobbyist or a policy advocate. You just have to be you with your values, with your perspective on what these maps should ultimately look like, on what this process should be a predicate for, on what the timeline for elections should signify for the legislature's commitment to a fair and open process and ultimately, a fair map whenever it's on the table now or in a future redistricting session. And then also, just remember that what you're saying is going to be on the record. These things are live streamed, they'll be recorded for later, and they could end up in transcripts. In fact, some of our most important evidence in our redistricting lawsuits has been our opportunity to cite both lawmakers and community members as you all have been fighting for fairness and representation across the state and talking about the things that matter to you and your community. So remember that, but also know that that's part of the point. That's what makes this great, is that you're part of a story that's being written in real time and that case for fair maps and justice moving forward. One thing I really like to emphasize when it comes to considering your testimony, whether it's oral and presented live or a written email or letter or call or whatever else to lawmakers or committee members, is to bring it back to values. Again, it's hard to debate in any kind of legal wonky way with things that are just fundamental to a value set and especially when, especially when they're authentic to you or to your identities as a Louisianian, a citizen and American, a person that cares about their community, their family, their state's future. So a few kind of values you can think about here are fairness, equal opportunity, transparency, or other values-based messages that speak to you and why fair maps, fair redistricting, and a fair electoral process really matter and compelled you to join a call like this or show up on Monday at the legislature. So a few kind of question prompts to think about, whether you're getting into the weeds of a bill or just kind of trying to take a step back and think about a values-based frame, is, you know, how does this bill make you feel about your opportunity to be fairly heard and represented? Will the bill allow for a transparent legislative or electoral process? What message does the bill send about the legislature's commitment to protecting equal opportunities for you and your community? Those types of questions apply to almost any bill, certainly one about election dates and deadlines, and certainly one that could be the precursor for a process to pass new maps, whether that happens this week or again, whether this week and this effort to change election deadlines is just laying the groundwork for them to pursue that campaign as fast as they can when a decision comes in Calais. Written testimony, you can also submit a variety of different ways. House and Senate Governmental Affairs Committees will post their agendas and provide the timeline for when you need to email the committee staff with your written testimony. For example, tomorrow's meeting, 3:00 PM, I think, has a deadline of submitting your written testimony via email, believe it's like four hours in advance. And that's all posted on the website now. And so that would require that by, you know, 11:00 AM Central, if it's 3:00 PM meeting, you're getting your email into the record. You can also reach out directly to your lawmakers. They may or may not be on that committee, but they have to take a vote on these things when it goes to the floor of either chamber. And often, you know, they were, they were sent there to represent you as a constituent. So there's a personal and special appeal when you're reaching out to your own elected officials, though you could email anyone at the State House and any of these lawmakers, especially folks who are in power on a committee or in leadership or are your individual representative or senator. Again, the email addresses, all that information is on the legislative website, but Power Coalition's gonna make your life even easier. They have one-click resources and other things that will be uploaded to their website, which will provide you with prompts and other ways to be connected with your lawmakers or relevant parties so that you can share your story, your angle, your views, your, you know, values, priorities for this process or any specific bill in your own word and make your voice heard in the weeks ahead. A few talking points to consider, though, as we are contemplating how these election timeline bills come into play and how this all is part of a broader effort and continued fight for fair maps, whether or not maps are brought up this time. And they, they could be. We're still seeing bills filed. There certainly is a chance that maps will be filed this time. But basically, any bill about the process in 2026 is implicitly about redistricting and is about creating an opportunity to pass a map later on. And there is no option other than to have a fair map if we have anything to say about it. So first and foremost, legislators, legislators have a moral and constitutional duty to perfect, protect fair representation, really, again, speaking to values and that type of responsibility that your lawmakers have to make sure that no voices are silenced. silenced in this process is foundational to our entire message frame and is that type of appeal that you can make in a multitude of ways, again, that are more personalized to your values, to kind of your moral compass and how it should be reflected and how the legislature takes action on any items, any bills, and certainly on maps whenever they are offered. We're also saying that this special session must not serve as a predicate to reverse protections that allow black communities to have an equal voice and elect candidates of their choice. Again, that framing is important, too. One thing, you know, that's been part of the record before is this call for two majority black districts. While that has been some of the framing that the courts have used and is kind of a more simplified way to think about what a fair map could look like, because many with two majority districts are among the constitutional options and the fair ones, for the protections of the Voting Rights Act, really the question is more, are there districts that would perform for, that would allow black voters to ever see their candidates of choice elected? And sometimes that might not require a sheer electoral majority among the black population, but at least enough of a proportion of the electorate to see that, you know, most of the time, black, black voters preferred candidates have a fair shot at being elected. So again, that language around equal voice and opportunity to elect candidates of choice, that's really what we are demanding, what the law enables and what any future map should be prioritizing. For this session especially, whether or not bills offered today aim to enact a new map now or simply buy more time to do that later, Louisiana is sending the same message, essentially that the state is willing and able to act quickly to expend, to expend resources to prepare to weaken black voters' electoral power. And then meanwhile, we have seen far too often how this legislature has routinely delayed and denied justice for black voters when compelled to pass maps that finally share power with black communities. We saw that with the veto override. We've seen that with their failure to push new state legislative maps, even though there is a standing court decision saying that their own House and Senate maps violate the Voting Rights Act as well, too. They have not moved to correct that nor to provide for special elections before the 2027 cycle. There's so many instances in which this legislature will drag its feet if it's about sharing power with black voters, but then suddenly cast everything aside and make special accommodation and expend funds and come into special session if it means they can strip away power for black people. So we want to name that, call it out and connect the dots between these types of timeline and election date bills with what the underlying theme is. Say it out loud that what they're trying to do is, is set the foundation to strip away black power in the electoral process by any means that they can, especially if the Supreme Court leaves any wiggle room to do that. If lawmakers no longer stand by the current map SB eight, which of course the state's actions in the congressional case Calais would suggest, or if they assume and in an unfounded way, the court has not weighed in or decided, but if they assume that the Supreme Court is going to strike down that map, they still have to commit to pass a fair map, a lawful map that balances the VRA and constitutional protections and does not deny black voters their equal citizenship once again by being a dilutive unfair map like the one they passed in 2022 and like multiple courts found to be a violation of the Voting Rights Act and basic principles of fairness and equal representation. Ultimately, and finally, lawmakers also need to commit to a fair and transparent redistricting process, whether it occurs right after the census and as they upheld in best practices like conducting a redistricting roadshow or providing for clear legislative processes for not rushing the process, not silencing voters, not disallowing testimony or hiding reports and information that could best inform the public and their legislative peers. They need to commit to those principles of fairness and transparency of a process that centers community and their voices rather than aims to silence them and leave them on the wayside if they rush a process now or in the coming months or, or whenever. So truly, it's about that commitment to basic principles of fairness, of transparency, of good government and accountability. All of that needs to be codified. So our hope is that it's not only going to be a legislative session where we are on the defensive and calling out the implicit ill intent of a election timelines bill or are staying on guard if they build, they decide to file a suppressive map. But we're also hopeful that we're able to bring some legislative items that can speak to these principles like transparency, like community engagement. So stay tuned if we're able to see some of our allies in the legislature file those things or even get them to committee. We've heard certainly that leaders are trying to push this process as fast as possible and keep it as narrow as possible to just those few bills that we've seen filed already around election dates, timelines and funding. But we're going to keep a close eye on what is filed in the days ahead and certainly lift up opportunities to call out what is unfair and unjust and to support the things that will signify a commitment to fairness, transparency and fair maps moving forward. So with that, let me see if there's any questions in the chat or other things that we can address while we have you all here. The basic to-dos, as I've shared, are to join us on Monday at the State Capitol to stay tuned for more updates and activations from Power Coalition, the resources that we have promised, the ways in which that you can show up to committee hearings, that you can reach out to your lawmakers and that you can continue to follow the fight for fair maps. This is just another chapter in what has been the longest book we are writing in real time about Louisiana's battle for a fair congressional map and fair representation. So please do join in writing this chapter with us, but also stay tuned for the next ones. We're waiting for that court decision. We're waiting to see if we need to mobilize to the Capitol again in the future, or if we can finally perhaps take a breath and just engage in another congressional cycle on a map that has some teeth to stick. But all to say, more to come soon. Let me see if there are any questions in this chat or if folks need to raise their hands or otherwise get involved. All right, going once, twice. Fantastic. So again, we hope to see you on Monday. If you need any more information about the status of the Calais litigation, about everything that happened at the court last week, please do reach out for resources or go to Power Coalition's website or social pages or the Legal Defense Funds as well. You can listen to the court audio. You can find talking points and background information, everything else on that front there. But for now, we just hope to see you at the State Capitol so we can be in community and be unrelenting in our call that has endured for years now for fair maps and a fair process.
Hey, Tori, I do think questions are starting to roll in now, but before we answer some of these, I just want to bring to everyone's attention, we, if you haven't already registered for Monday for mobilization, go ahead. The link is in the chat. We will repost it now in the chat, but I need you all to go ahead and register and bring others, send that link to your family, your friends. We need as many people there as possible. And some of the questions, reoccurring questions I'm seeing in the chat is how you can be engaged if you can't be present at the Capitol. Tori have stated very well, like we'll have a lot of resources on the Power Coalition's website, particularly those one clicks that we will have activated. You can utilize that to send information to your legislators. We'll have talking points that people want to just call their legislative offices with a script. We'll have all of those resources available to you. And then I see other questions about, besides presence and engagement, are there any other ways to support? We are expecting to have hundreds of people there. So if, you know, if your organization or your capacity also is able to bring water, if anyone wants to help with voter registration while we're out there, we'll have all the materials needed. Just let someone on the Power Coalition team know. And let's see if I see any other questions.
That one about transportation, I think there's a link to sign up for the buses and.
Yes, so we definitely have transportation options, that information, the link, use the link provided in the chat for wherever you are in the state. We'll have a bus coming from Shreveport. We have a bus coming from Lafayette, Lake Charles, Baton Rouge and New Orleans. And on the link, you should see the pickup locations and times.
And for folks that aren't able to come in person, in addition to all the ways that you can engage that Cree highlighted in, you know, the one clicks, the scripts, et cetera, you can also watch the hearings in real time. There's a live stream of all of these hearings that you can find at the legislative website. So you can tune in so that you're in the loop on everything that's happening and so that you can be sending good vibes to all of your friends who didn't make the trip and are testifying themselves. So there's ways to view what's happening in real time there as well.
I also see if you're late, you can't make it at one. Yes, you can certainly make it for three. Tori, we have a committee meeting, that hearing, that day on Monday as well, and I do believe it's at 3:00 PM. So three will be fine. All right, any other questions? Again, I just gotta, I want to highlight, please utilize the link to register so we have a head count. And then additionally, you know, try to bring to people, like we really encourage you to bring yourself into people if you can. And we encourage you to share the one click with the community so they can, you don't have to do just one, you can do them all, all ways of engagement is best.
And to the quick question, is it mandatory to get up and speak? It is not mandatory at all. You can submit a green card or a red card and just list your name, but indicate that you do not want to speak. But I will say that I've had awesome community members come before, like college students and others, who went and they thought, I'm not going to speak, I'm too nervous. And then by the end, they saw all their friends do it and they said, I'm going to speak. And they had some of the best testimony ever. So know that you might build up that confidence and want to. Don't rule it out as an option, but don't make that be your reason not to come. You can absolutely come and be very productive and helpful in this whole process and in showing our unified support or opposition to bad bills by just being there, submitting a card yourself. But do think about testifying because it can be really gratifying and I'm sure you'd be fantastic. We can help you prepare that so that you can practice or, or can have that confidence going up to the table.
If the schedule is not on that mobilized link, we will definitely update the link for transportation with that information and we can email all participants on the call with the transportation information.
All right, if there's no further questions, know that more information is coming your way. If there's anything that we haven't covered, whether it's about the case, the background of our fight for fair maps or the next steps, whether it's this session or anything that could happen from the courts, from the legislatures or anything in between, please do reach out. We're here to support you and we're so grateful to be in this fight together. Could not do the work. We would never have, you know, hope for a fair map or fair process without community mobilizing. It's truly the heart of the democratic process and what keeps us in this game. So thank you for showing up tonight. We cannot wait to see you next week. If you can make it to the legislature tomorrow, show up. We'd love to have you there or any of the other days. It's going to be meeting in the days ahead, but certainly Monday, that mobilization is going to be one of the most fun. So can't wait to see you there. And again, reach out to us if we can provide any support or answer any questions in the meantime.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.